Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, paragraph 18, in the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Wilmington Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. Via technological means, members of the public who would like to participate in the meeting via Zoom can do so by going to this link. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656 and enter meeting ID 84102636939, then press pound and press pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment by following the steps previously noted, then press star nine on their telephone keypad or using the raise hand function on Zoom. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town website as soon as we are able. So you want to do our 7:30? Start right off? Are they here?
Right.
Continue Public Carrying Conservation Subdivision Design Special Permit 19-0179 Nickel Street. Jill, you're here?
I am.
Actually, sorry. One second, Mr. Chairman. Can we do a quick roll call of the members?
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. Terry?
Here.
Sean? Sean, you're muted.
Here.
Angela?
Here.
Rondi?
Here.
Obviously, I'm here. Okay, Jill, you're up.
Hi, good evening. Jill Mann here on behalf of Golden Realty, the applicant in connection with the CSD for 79 Nickel Street. We heard you loud and clear last hearing, and you wanted us to respond to all of the engineering comments, and I'm actually here to say we aren't able to. We're going to have to accept the denial of the CSD and to proceed as a conventional subdivision. It's with the 30-foot buffer around the entire project, the requirement for 35% open space, and now, you know, a 50-foot right-of-way with a 28-foot pavement width and sidewalks on both sides, there's no place to put the units. So unfortunately, this, you know, I think you saw the writing on the walls, it just isn't eligible for a CSD. We've tried our best, but it just isn't going to work. I mean, we had been under the, I don't want to say oppression because that's not a fair statement. We had been hoping that because it was a CSD, we would be allowed to minimize the amount of pervious area and reduce the amount of pavement, but it doesn't look like we're going to be able to, so we're just going to proceed with a conventional plan.
Okay.
So I don't know if the board is going, if you just, the plans are as they sit, Mr. Sorrentino, I can't amend them, I can't do anything. So I don't know if you just want, under the rules, you know, we're allowed to still go forward with the conventional, but I don't know if you just want to deny the special permit, if you want me to withdraw it. I defer to the board.
I think it's better if you withdraw. You agree with that, Val?
Yeah, it would certainly. Easier.
Yeah, oh, yeah, so you don't have to do the decision, I understand. So at this point, you know, for all the reasons stated, we are not going to proceed with the CSD, and we're going to be resubmitting for a conventional subdivision on that lot. So we are requesting withdrawal of the permit.
So should we vote on the withdrawal submission, Val, or does she have to do something in writing?
You could probably vote on it, but Jill, if you wouldn't mind following up with something in writing.
Oh, sure. I know you have to when you're doing withdrawal without prejudice, but when you simply withdraw, I don't think, just for Mr. Sorrentino's purpose, I don't think it's necessary, but I will absolutely follow up in writing to you.
Okay.
But this does not pertain to the stormwater because the stormwater would stay, but we can, I don't even think we've opened that yet.
So that was supposed to open tonight. So, and that-
Delay that.
That would be, I guess, we would prefer if you would withdraw both and reapply with both.
See, then I have to withdraw without prejudice for that one? I don't, have you ever, did you open it? I mean, I don't.
We would need a whole new application, you know, plan set, it would be all new calculations, so it would be-
Yeah, you're right, you're right. So I don't, do you want me to, so this one, it's irrelevant if you withdraw with or without prejudice, so the board doesn't really have to take much action. The other one, I have a question, do we ever open it? I don't, do you remember if we did? Because if we didn't open it, then I withdraw without prejudice because we never opened, and it's not an issue.
It was supposed to be open tonight, so-
Oh, that's what you said, apologies. Okay, so maybe if we vote on the special, the special permit, and then we'll do that one, and I'll just move to, or I'll request to withdraw without prejudice for the storm.
Okay, I'll take a motion to withdraw the special permit 19-01 for 79 Nickel Street, map 35, parcel 29, as the conservation subdivision design.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Angela, how you vote?
Yes.
Sean?
Yep.
Terry?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes.
Thank you very much.
So moved.
And I'll follow up tomorrow morning, first thing, Ms. Gingrich, with the written request, but this next one, because we haven't opened, I would request that we, that the board allow us to withdraw without prejudice for the storm.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to withdraw without prejudice, the stormwater management permit for 20-08 for 79 Nickel Street, map 35, parcel 29.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so Sean?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time. I know it's been a long road. See you soon, take care.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
What time is it, 7:38? So you want to do the Form A, Val?
Sure, that sounds good. I'll pull it up on my screen. I think there are folks here representing the Form A plan, but I can just sort of speak to it. They're dividing the existing lot, which, so this is Wildwood Street, there's an existing home here at, I think it's 67. The existing lot is kind of like a tooth-shaped with the roots coming into Wildwood Street. They're looking to draw a line here to create a lot 1A, and then there will be a remaining lot A2. And if there's anything else, I'm sure that the folks can speak to it if the board has any questions, but engineering reviewed this, we reviewed it, and we didn't see, we had them, I think, do one revision, and it's now in order to sign.
Anybody have any questions? Rondi, any questions? Terry? Angela? Sean? Okay, I take a motion to accept the Form A as submitted.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, okay. Terry?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Hey, they're all set, so Cheryl, I got to come by and sign?
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Angela, how do the minutes look? The 10th, the 5th?
Didn't, didn't have a chance to look at them.
Sean, how do the minutes look?
I looked at all three, they look fine.
All right, they look fine to me. Take a motion to accept the minutes as submitted for November 10th, December 8th, and January 5th.
So moved.
Oh, sorry, second.
Sean?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. There's no Board of Appeals, there's no old business, no new business. You want to do anything, Val?
I'll make an announcement. You hopefully received an invite to our workshops we're going to be holding in February for the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan and our Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Speaking to the updating of our sort of natural hazards and preparing for how those hazards may be changing in the future with our changing climate, so you're invited to attend. It'll be a kind of a working session, and if you can, great, if you can't, we can catch up with you later.
Val, how did the email?
Sorry?
How did the invitation come, via email?
I think you should have received a calendar invite via your town email.
Okay, I'll figure it out.
And the workshops are going to be, there's one on February 12th, and there's one on February 26th. Those are Fridays, they're in the morning, and it'll be, there will also be, you know, closer to, when we've gotten some feedback, we'll have listening sessions open to the public, so those, you can also attend those, but this is sort of a more of a working session for folks who are familiar with some of the hazards in town and specific areas. So if you'd like to attend, please do so, and let me know if you did not get an invite and you'd like to attend.
Came from someone at Green International, not the invitation, that might have been mine, and it didn't come from Valerie or Cheryl.
Yeah, it would be, it'd come from Danielle Spicer, their Greens are consultant for the planning process.
Yeah, I got him, I'm just not sure I can attend. It's a work day, too much work.
Every busy lady, very busy. Anything else? We've got a couple of minutes.
One other thing, I know I talked to you about this, Mike, but Rondi, I think you were around the pet care facility portion of the bylaw was drafted to an owner of a local business who'd like to open a facility at the Cummings Properties of Concord, and that area is highway industrial, and it's, pet care facilities aren't allowed in highway industrial. And just trying to kind of, I wasn't here at the time, but wondering if there was a specific reason why that zone was left out. I believe that section was kind of drafted for a specific user over at, on Bull Street. So going to be looking to, they're hoping to kind of change that section of the bylaw to open it up for highway industrial zones, which seem appropriate for pet care businesses, not a lot of residential neighbors there. And then they're going to look at maybe getting rid of the, there's a requirement for a minimum of 15,000 square feet.
Wow, I don't remember that.
Right, and-
Yeah, I think it was for that, I'm sorry, I think it was for that one, Rondi, remember it was going to be at the Conneroben Street?
Yeah, where we're doing housing now and some other stuff. Yeah. I don't remember, I thought that it was only in general business, and it might have been in neighborhood business, but I can't be certain.
General business, general industrial, I believe, and then we did allow it in the Neighbors' District as well.
Yeah.
Not highway industrial.
Yeah, I'm surprised we didn't allow it in highway industrial, because I find that more dense and intense than anywhere else in this town. I wouldn't have-
Yeah, that's what I kind of wanted to get an idea of, if there was a specific reason why it was that constrained, or if it was just, you know, tailored to that specific user, which is what I-
I think that Mike and I would agree, it was kind of tailored to that specific user, but if we included it in industrial area, why wouldn't we have included it in the highway industrial? Might have been, we worked-
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, so that's one of the things that may come up, zoning, petition zoning articles are due on Friday, so that's one of the items that may in some changes to the pet care facility portion of the bylaw.
Do we need to have a definition of what pet care is, so it doesn't get confused with veterinary or anything like that?
There is a, there's a list of, I guess, subuses that fall under it that we have in the bylaw, so-
Okay.
Yeah, so I think it's, it's pretty well outlined.
Okay, so we have a 7:45, public caring site plan review 21-01, and stormwater management permit 21-01 for 687 Main Street, map 39, parcel 11A. John McKenna, are you here for U-Haul?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. John McKenna, I'm the attorney, I represent U-Haul, 687 Main Street, we're here for a site plan review. This site here is the home of U-Haul, which is retail and truck rental. Rehaul, U-Haul had paved portion in the back that's shown on the plan, it should see from the area, but the trail is, lines down the middle towards the back. They paved that without seeking a permit or permission from the Conservation Commission. When they originally did the paving, they went to the DPW and asked for how they got a permit for paving. The DPW had said that we don't, you don't need a permit only if you're doing it in the street, and they went and paved it, but obviously, this is all surrounded by wetlands and they need conservation approval, and also site plan approval. The town contacted them through Valerie and the Building Department and others, we met August of 2019. We started going through a plan for the conservation after the winter, and then the COVID hit, and we had a notice of intent that was filed. The notice of intent first permit was denied in December, I believe, or November. We filed the new plan, which we've been working on, and we filed the site plan and a special permit for stormwater management. Is that about correct, Valerie, that timeline?
That sounds right.
So now we have the plan, we've met with the department heads, and also, we had a meeting last week with Valerie and the town engineer, Paul, and reviewed the plan again. We're here before the planning board for site plan approval. Typically, a site plan approval is with a new building and a whole new use and structures, but this is done through site plan because of the size of the paving that was done in the alter to the, to the site, so we need permission from the planning board. A lot of the work is going to be done with the Conservation Department, but still, the planning board has review of this, and the site plan is here before you, you folks, for review, and we need site plan approval to complete this project. A lot of the engineering on the conservation part, after review in our last meeting, we're going to make substantial changes to it. After review with the engineers, it's kind of going to go back towards what the original plan had, after considering groundwater recharge due to finding out that there was a chemical site across the street that had done contaminants in the area, and water recharge in this area may be more harmful than beneficial, as we've, as we now have found, so we're going through a different system, and they've revised the plan already. In a meeting with the department heads, the Fire Department, had indicating that the, what they have for, I don't know, Valerie, if you can bring the plan up?
Sure.
If you have a chance. Just had to reference the plan, Mr. Chairman, for the members. So basically, the change in the plan is, the front of the building has not changed at all, it's in the back, and in the back, where you see where the restoration area here, and the back, that area is what had been changed. And in the back, they have what they call shunting of trucks, so the trucks are stored in the back for rental, so they go from rear bumper to front bumper, and they, as they first, last one in goes in the back, and the first one comes out. It's constant shuffling of trucks, trucks who come from New Jersey come here, and they go, so trucks come and go. The Fire Department had indicated that for an emergency, if there was a fire back there, they need space for the emergency vehicles to get around, and also, if there was a fire, they need brakes in the areas for how they're parked. So we have, working on a revised plan that shows that, which would take out the, probably the first two areas here towards the left, those two rows going down there would be taken out, so they have room around there, and then across the middle of it would be taken out, middle going across from left to right, to provide a space if there was a fire in the front to give access there. And also, it's a requirement in the town that you have green strip down the middle, so there's going to be a green strip down the middle. So we've made substantial changes to that. The two trailers to the right are identified and within the 50-foot area, those areas had, those two trailers store just some useful storage for pots or things like that, I'm not even sure what's in them, but those trailers are being removed and are going to be replaced back there. There's also going to be more restoration area to the left, that has been requested by the conservation, by Conservation Director has made a note on that, and in the back there, the infiltrators are going to be changed a bit, too. Also, the canopy to the right, which is shown as the dotted line to the right of the building, the Fire Department wanted to know how tall that was, and that's over 13 feet tall, so the vehicles can get in and through there as well. We talked about the dotted area in the front bottom-left corner on the plan, that's the area, the monitoring site down here in the bottom-left, in, around in that area, that's where I believe the monitoring wells are, is that correct, Valerie, where they identified that area, I believe?
Those wells are back here, in the back, right here.
Okay, so there's monitoring sites there, but I thought there was just out in that left corner there, I thought that was some as well. But the bottom line here is, go ahead, Valerie.
There's an, there's an area here with the propane tanks.
Oh, is that what that is, propane tanks in there?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, the wells will be back there. So the bottom line on the site plan approval is, we're not looking for a complete site plan approval, we're looking for approval of substantial transfer of the site, a transition of the site to, for parking in the area, and try to meet the requirements of the parking with the green strip down the middle, and also incorporate the conservation requirements to make it a better, a better, better consideration of the area it surrounds, it's a resource area, there's the brook over there, and make sure that the water isn't flowing directly into the brook, but going through infiltration in the area.
All right, so, so does all be coordinated with Paul, Val?
Yes, Paul issued, and we issued comments, and we had actually a follow-up meeting with John and their, to go over the comments, and they're working on those plan changes.
So John, there wasn't really any, you okay with Paul's comments? You taking care of the comments of Town Engineer and what ConCon had?
Yes, the, the comments that Paul have, we've been very hopeful, we had a very productive meeting last Wednesday, I believe it was, and we've already worked to add those and facilitate those into the plan.
So, so Val, we just need to get some updated plans for the next meeting, and he's going to be all squared away?
That's the hope, yes.
You feel good about that, John?
Oh, I do, but they have to get conservation approval, we have to go through the conservation, but we're working in the right, right direction, we've been working on this for quite some time, and it's more of a conservation input is the largest part of this.
Yep. All right, Rondi, you got any questions?
Nope.
Angela?
Nope.
Sean?
Nope.
Terry?
I'm sorry.
I think we're all good, I think we can just, why don't we put him in at 7:30 for the next meeting, and then we should square this up.
Sounds good.
Okay, take a, take a motion to continue to, when's the next meeting? When is it?
March 2nd. March 2nd.
Continue this public hearing to March 2nd at 7:30.
When's the next conservation meeting? Is that going to be before then? I think it's March 3rd, the next meeting is March 3rd. Should we go after the next conservation meeting, Valerie?
That's up to you, if you want to, if you want to skip a month and go to April, you're welcome to that.
You think there's going to be any changes from ConCon?
Wait, don't we, would we need the approval from ConCon first, Valerie, to make sure there isn't any changes, and then come with the site plan approval, because it might be, I, I'm not certain, it's just the meeting for the conservation, if that was on the first, and then we'll meet you on the, on the third would be better, but it's reversed, we're meeting on you on the second, and then conservation on the third. I guess we could-
It's a good question, how do you feel, Val? You, you think there's going to be some changes from ConCon?
I don't know, we have to see what comes in, so I think, like John said, their main issues are with the resource areas, so, you know, it may be a good idea to go to Conservation Commission with the revised plans first, and then-
All right, so you want to, so, all right, so what's the meeting date, March?
It would go to April, April 6th.
Very much, April 6th, all right, then, we'll take a, take a motion to continue to April 6th at 7:30.
So moved.
All right, all right, so Sean? Terry?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Rondi?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. All right, thank you, make sure those plans are square, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
Have a good night, folks.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Anything coming up from the public meeting, I mean, the town meeting, Val, that you know about?
That pet care article, there may be a request to surplus some land off of Mary That's pretty much what I know so far.
We all said on the rezoning for Bailey Road, is that what it was, Bailey?
Yes, Council's reviewing the articles, and they're going to get them back to me so we can get them in front of the selectmen.
Is it a different Marion one? Did we have Marion last year?
Say that again?
Didn't we have a Marion Street rezoning last year?
This would be Mary Street.
Oh, sorry.
Surplus land off of Mary Street, and then rezoning at Bailey Ave and Mozart Ave.
One thing, Val, I meant to say, so that withdrawal, that was earlier, you know, they come in for normal site plan review, you know, the board doesn't really look favorable on any waivers, so, to make sure everybody, everything's up to the oil, okay? How's the economic development going? Anything, anything we should know about?
The Economic Development Committee applied for a state grant to get a planning consultant to work with them on a COVID response plan, sort of action items that, that can be implemented short-term to try to get things back to normal, so that's sort of up and coming, the state assigns a consultant to work on it, we haven't, we haven't been notified who our consultant's going to be, but-
on it, um, we haven't, we haven't been notified who our consultant's going to be, but, um, we will have a consultant to work on that, um, and, um, that's all I can think of right now.
Okay. More importantly, did anybody on the board have GameStop stock, I mean, everybody doing okay, or, you're all here, so I guess you didn't hit it rich?
No.
No friends with buddies in the basement? All right. Well, all right, I guess, uh, till next month, I guess we can, John.
Well, for meeting.
All right.
Bye, everybody.
All right, bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Good night, Cheryl.
Yeah?